My allegiance to the fire of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty just for all.
The rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure productive meetings. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment. But the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedure are posted in the town hall and are available for anyone to review.
Alright, welcome. So we have Bob, Mike, Jessica, Tom, and Rich, and I'm Kristen, and I've got everybody else here and online, and I have no additions or deletions outside of the regular items that can be talked about on the, within the regular agenda items. Does anybody have anything else?
I have a few things to put in the whole business, but it's all things we've discussed before.
Okay. So the minutes that need approval are from our last regular meeting from July 8th.
One second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, Carrie.
So we have nothing pre-requested, and just one announcement, which is that PEG TV has given us our very own official Pollitt Talking Stick. It's labeled. So, Sue, do you want to be the keeper?
I still forget.
Just don't forget to, you know, turn it on and talk into it instead of using it as your talking accessory.
Okay.
Oh, someone should announce that the library book sale is this coming weekend, right? It's a, and the library book sale is coming up this weekend.
Yes.
See the books at Metta Me.
Okay. Zoning Administrator, nothing to report at this meeting. Planning Commission, is Dex Monday, right?
Uh, there was a meeting, but I have no report.
There was a meeting. It's next week.
Oh, there were minutes that were sent out, but maybe a bit belated. Okay. Alright, no report.
Road Foreman.
Yes. Sorry. So throughout the last two weeks, the Highway Department has completed the D and H Rail Trail Rest Area Project in West Pollitt. They've completed the Bauer Road Project. They've installed a speed sign on Button Falls Road. Continued roadside mowing, maintained trucks, equipment, and the shop. Ditched and completed shoulder work on Towesley Hill and Wait Hill. Installed the Welcome to Vermont sign at the New York-Vermont border on Button Falls Road. And upcoming projects is the burn bust under the guardrail on Route 153, cleaning culverts and shoulders on 153, the River Road and the River Road Bridge. Unclogging culverts on Heatherington and Route 153, and conducting shoulder work on Chuck Clark. And that's all that I have for the report.
And we'll do the paving under new business?
So the request for proposals was just sent out. We worked with Patrick to finally get that out, so that took a little bit of time, so that should be at the next meeting.
Okay.
I sent it to you all in your emails, so you have it.
I saw that. Good work.
Thank you. Bob and Rich helped, and Patrick helped, and so that is going to be posted on the website, and then I reached out to four different paving companies and sent it to them directly. So hopefully we'll hear back.
Great.
And have something at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the road? Assessors?
Nope. Nothing. Julie sent Mike, you and I, an email about an invoice from the assessor's office that you should review. I think it has to do with rates, which wouldn't be discussed in a public meeting, but just as a heads up.
I'll talk to Julie about that.
Yeah.
Randy?
I've had several questions. I was talking to Deb, she says I should bring it up. They asked when they're expecting actually loads on the ground going to cause them to leave the place. Is this your, any idea yet?
Um, I see there is an invoice to that company, but I don't believe, I don't know when, when they intend to. I guess you'd have to try and get a message to Karen, an email or something, a folder or something. Town Clerk's memo.
Uh-oh, hold on Deb, we can't hear you.
She's ghosting us.
Give me a sec, let me see if I can.
So it's good from our end. In case you can't hear.
Are you hooked up, Deb? Hold on, let me. Review last time, I feel like I did like a unplug it and plug it back in situation, but I'm not sure. I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Do you want me to read your report? Okay. Okay, sorry, I don't know what's happening there. Um, okay, so from Deb, Constable Thomas Covino, there's a letter from Criminal Justice Council, Vermont Police Academy, read PRS docket 25 VCJC 0047, which I will pass on to everybody.
I think we have a copy of that printed already.
Oh, everybody's got it, okay. Um, there are applications to review, to review from the Department of Liquor and Lottery for JV Bean LLC, which is the barn restaurant and tavern, that there are three applications for outside consumption, third-class restaurant slash bar, and first-class restaurant slash bar. The local fees have been paid, so they just require select board approval. As a friendly reminder, we don't need to discuss any other specifics on the applications rather than, or aside from just the who it's for and the license numbers, and that's all.
Anybody want to make a motion on these liquor licenses?
Sure, I'll move that we approve them. The three applications here, I guess that's 62927, 62926, and 62925.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, Carrie. Okay, any more? Anything from the Town Clerk's report? Thank you. Have a good night, Deb. Julie?
Uh, two more this evening. Payables, $10,926.75, accounts payable is $26,697.24. Breakdown is general fund, $17,472, Highway 11, 42232, wastewater, 6243696, and we have our first small bill on reappraisal, which is $23,163.99. On the table are the three financial policies that you all have sort of approved. Oh, my bad.
Uh, the three financial policies are there for you to sign. You had approved them at the last meeting. We had, you know, adjusted the language, and this is ready to go. I did purchase a new printer for my office. I've been having problems with mine, even though it's fairly new, and it's been really super annoying, but essentially, in order for this printer to like, continue to be under warranty, I need to spend the equivalent of two of them in ink in a year. So I have been buying Jeep Ink, and now I have a new printer that comes with unlimited ink for the first two years.
Wow.
So. Uh, also, just in order to process tax bills after we set the rates this evening, I'm going to be closed to the public next week. So, then, uh, let's see, we'll do tax rates last, but the only other thing is the, there is $100,000 that just came up for reinvesting, and $90,000 will come again on the 31st of this month. Short-term T-bills are still at a good rate, um, and so they had recommended if we didn't have immediate cash flow needs, to sort of re, keep rolling them in one-to-six-month T-bills. The only immediate need we're gonna have is reappraisal, which won't hit all at once because they're gonna bill us over time, and also we can just take the 90K at 731 and pull some of that out then, so, um, I was thinking we would just put, uh, the $100,000 in a six-month T-bill. If you would approve that.
Somebody want to make a motion on that, or?
Sure, I can. I'll move that we follow the investment strategy that Julie just laid out.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, Carrie. Thank you.
I don't know if you want to just take, get the motions for the warrants out of the way, and then we'll do the tax rates?
I did have a question about one of the invoices. So for the, the legal fees that aren't MERREL, is that for the Freedom of Information Act thing, or is that for a different thing? Because it was, I forget the name of the firm, but it was a chunk of change. So I was wondering what we're paying for that.
Primer, piper, ingo, sten, and cram?
I'm sorry, what's the name of it?
Primer, piper?
Yes.
Yeah, that's for that situation, okay.
Michael Tarrant works for.
But I do have a question then, because I assumed it was maybe also the bankruptcy lawyer, because if you look at the bottom of that invoice, it has some outstanding invoices that I have included.
That would make a lot more sense.
That is.
That would be right, because we used additional.
Additional resources for, for the bankruptcy, and I believe you're absolutely right, that it is the bankruptcy.
That makes sense to me now, because I wasn't thinking we would have that much for the.
Not that much, it's just quick anyway.
Yes.
It's Michael Tarrant is.
Okay. Thank you. That was the only question I had.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion for these two warrants?
I'll make a motion to accept warrant 26005, and warrant 26006. I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, Carrie. These, these passes, we could just sign them because we voted and approved them last week.
The only, so I've left you the rate sheets that I'm recommending you approve. They are basically just the mathematics that make the approved budget work, and for the wastewater, it's essentially the mathematics that make your posted budget work. The only thing I will tell you is on my, on my memo, I had handwritten little notes and the, under this year, the local rate, I just mixed up my numbers, so it's actually .0068. It is correct on the tax rate sheet that you're gonna sign. It was just incorrect in my notes to you. Um, the wastewater rate is going to be going up a little bit, but I think it was, uh, last year it was 102980, so it's not, uh, too drastic. And then the happy news on the tax rate is that even though the municipal, the general fund rate is going up a small bit, the highway is going down a little bit, um, but education rates did drop this year, um, because of a one-time buy-down. So happy news, your, your education rates are low this year, and they will not be next year.
Yeah. I was like, that's only low because the governor stuck all that extra money in it, right?
That's correct. So do you want me to, so I'm recommending that you approve a general fund tax rate of .3836, a highway fund tax rate of .3414, and a local agreement tax rate of .0068.
What does everybody feel on that?
Well, that's what the numbers say, so.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve those rates. I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, Carrie. And now the sewer wastewater users' fee?
Yeah, if you'll forgive me, I did not remember to make a copy of that one for myself, so if you could just tell me what the recommended number is, then I will recommend it to you.
Okay, so wastewater budget, 131, 100?
So I would recommend that you, uh, set a wastewater rate of 1,071.39 for the year, which will be quarterly installments of 267.85.
Can you say that one more time? $1,071.39 with installments of? Thank you.
Anybody want to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve that stated wastewater fee.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, Carrie.
I just want to make sure, so a rate of $1,071.39 with installments of 267.85, that's appropriately written?
Yes. Okay, so now, does anybody else have anything they want to ask Julie about, or discuss with Julie? Okay. Thank you, Julie. Emergency management?
I'm so sorry, who made the motions on the wastewater?
Um, I made the motion, I think Rich seconded it?
Okay, thank you.
Were the homestead, non-homestead, were those meant to be included in any of those?
They don't have any say over some of the rates, but that's just if you want to put that in the minutes, you could certainly put that in the minutes to provide more information, but it doesn't mean to be a part of the motion.
I'm just trying to make sure I'm getting off the numbers, though. Alright. That's all.
Okay. Emergency management, there's nothing, and health officer, there's nothing, and facilities. Is there any to, anything to report on facilities?
Yes.
Okay.
I will be meeting with, uh, Mr. Hazelton this coming Thursday in the school in the town hall.
Okay.
So I'll keep the folks informed, as I learn more.
And that's it, but excellent, thank you. Julie?
Aye. I found another spot when I was out on the porch that I don't think we caught that first time. So this is underneath these steps out here, as you look at, at the top of the steps. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, to add it. Sure.
Since he's here, right?
He picks everything up.
Wastewater treatment facility, we got all the, the DMR reports, mostly reports, every, as far as I, to the best of my understanding, they all look good. Anything from the Medway School Board to report?
Not at this time.
Not at this meeting. And anything from the public, Pollitt Public Library to report?
Just the book sale this weekend.
Okay, book sale this weekend, excellent. Older unfinished business?
I had a couple of things. So I just wanted to let everyone know that after the last meeting when we approved the, one of those contractors for the Merck grant, that I let them know, and also Maggie at Rettlin Medical Planning Commission, and the contractor is drawing up a contract for us. So we don't have it yet, but hopefully we'll have it by next time, and we can look at that. Um, the other thing that I wanted to sort of report on is that I had attended a training about ordinances, and I don't want to go into it too much right now, but I think it was a very useful training, and I'd like to share a little bit of the information about ordinances at our next meeting. So maybe we could put in a little on the agenda to do that next time. Because it does seem, it does seem to me like there are some cases where there are, there could be a reason to do an ordinance, even if there's already a law about it, because then we might have more flexibility at the local level. So I just.
Okay.
I want to share a bit of the information about it.
Great.
And that's all from me.
Under older unfinished.
Yeah.
Nancy?
So just to follow up, the last meeting, we had discussed the situation up on Robinson Hill Road. I wanted to let you know that we do have a, a meeting scheduled for Thursday morning at 9:00 a.m. with the property owner, um, the excavator.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones, and I was hoping that James was gonna be here, because he's the only one I haven't been able to reach.
I will invite him.
Okay, so it's 9:00 there.
Right there.
Yep, thank you, Lynn.
Alright. Good. New business? Scrap metal.
Everyone's looking at me. Should I say something? Scrap metal allocation fund?
Did you have a?
Well, so that was.
Fund allocation for scrap metal, did we need to do something?
So at our last meeting, there was the discussion about when situations take place where perhaps the Highway Department might want to sell scrap metal. The board has the opportunity to make a motion to state where those funds will go.
Yeah, and I think James was just looking for clarification on if he's free to just like, put these things on Facebook Marketplace himself, or ask us to put things on Front Porch Forum for him, or, like, he, he was seeking a little bit of clarification on you authorizing him to go ahead and do that, and then also, then you would need to make a motion on putting the money somewhere. You had talked about having it go into the equipment fund.
That seems like the most sound.
Yeah.
I would think that it would make the most sense if he had approval from the highway liaisons before he sold anything, and, and then the money would go. and, and then the money would go into the equipment fund. And that way, it would be, it would be on the select board, and if the liaison said, "Well, maybe we need to bring it back to the board," or, or if we just go ahead and do it, it would be their, their call, but it wouldn't be his call, so. I think that makes the most sense, and the cleanest for everything to go. Um, do we want, we could put that in the form of a motion and have that, or do we need to write a little policy for used equipment?
So, I think you can either have a policy, or you can have it in a motion. I, I think what we were originally talking about was just some scrap metal. So, I think if you want to have it be broadened to equipment, you might at least wanna set a ceiling on like, approximate costs, so that you don't find that like, a rogue future, not, nothing against you guys, but a rogue future highway liaison and a rogue road foreman sell a big truck for like, twenty bucks, you know?
Um, I guess what, I, he mentioned a couple of, of you snowplows, it just didn't really sound like scrap metal to me, but they weren't of anything of major value.
Maybe like, small attachments, or implements, or I don't know, however you wanna phrase it. That things that you think individually would be worth less than whatever you want to put that number on.
Right, so, we would have to have that in, in the form of something to, to kind of monitor, so it would be-
Can we do it like an isolated event?
Well, if we do it like an isolated event, I think that then every time that he wants to sell something, we'd have to make a motion.
But we shouldn't have too much scrap metal anyways, if we're doing it once a year, then, yeah.
A thought that I had on it was that, so our purchasing policy is that, you know, anything below five hundred dollars is, doesn't require board approval, whereas anything above that does. So, perhaps the board could say the sale of anything under, you know, miscellaneous scrap under X amount would be allocated to the equipment fund, whereas anything within a certain category or over a certain amount of money would have to be reviewed by the board. Or by the highway liaisons. Because I know at the last meeting, there was the conversation about the town truck sale, the town truck sold, and how in the interest of with the updated open meeting laws, and wanting to have full transparency to try to put something like that on the agenda as to where that money might go, in case there's an interested party out in the world that wants to sit in, sit in on the conversation, so, to maybe have a certain amount of money and below, just to be able to automatically go into a certain fund. Whereas something that might be a little bit bigger, perhaps you'd wanna consider putting that somewhere else in a place of need. I should say that.
So, the, the other thing that comes to mind from what Julie brings up is, is how to determine what exactly should go in a value that we would consider fair. In the instance that, that we have a, a couple of rogue, rogue members that, that are kind of like, ah, you know, I know this guy that wants, so we'll just let it go for a little or nothing, that's to try and- Julie?
So, how about a motion that says something along the lines of you authorize the road foreman in conjunction with highway liaisons to sell un- unused, um, small parts, equipment, implements, provided that the presumed value is under a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars?
Yeah.
I think a thousand's a good number.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Surplus. Let me use surplus, Ellen.
Surplus, yes, that's the word I was looking for, so surplus equipment, yeah.
Surplus, okay. Frank?
Is there a list with an estimated value that James can come up with that you guys could review?
No, it would have to be something that just people with experience would have to appraise honestly, just-
And if it's scrap, it's by the pound, so you don't know what it weighs until you get it to the scrap dealer, then, uh, if there are old plow frames or something like that.
Yeah, there's no way you can really get, you're gonna have to allow your people to have a little bit of judgment.
Could you read that back to us, if you wrote it down, maybe?
I wrote down-
Should be interesting.
Cute. Uh, motion made to authorize the highway foreman in conjunction with the highway liaisons to sell miscellaneous surplus equipment valued under one thousand dollars. How was that?
Perfect.
Was that interesting?
Can I make that motion?
Yes.
Do you wanna add on to the end of that motion, that you would, that that money would then be allocated to the equipment fund?
Yeah, I think that was, was already picked.
Yeah, and then it will-
So, I'm gonna say earnings to be allocated to the equipment.
Yeah.
That is a nice motion. Good work, team, okay, so, over. Okay. I just wanna second this excellent motion.
Did somebody second that?
I did.
I did? Uh, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry.
What about, um, does there need to be anything said about larger?
I think we'd bring that to the board, probably.
So, we don't really need to say-
Anything larger than that would have to come for a, a board approval, I would say, makes-
Well, great.
What else we have for new business?
I don't think I have anything.
You've done excellent tonight. What do we have for public comment?
The only thing I have is that-
Whoa, whoa!
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, tonics, tonics. Stuck with this thing. I'm the last Republican in trouble. The only thing I can say is the update on the Secretary of State of the Meeting Law is that they had somebody there last time who was deaf with two sign people, and then you're trying to do inclusion of everybody, 'cause there's apparently people who are hard of hearing, et cetera, who are intimidated and coming to public meetings. So, this is to be able to offer them this, so this will probably be one of the recommendations to the legislature. The only thing is, is that some of the towns aren't gonna be able to accommodate that, so there would be maybe a hardship or undue hardship exemption that some towns would be able to declare, where they're not able to provide sign people at meetings, and may not even be able to do speech to text, which some of these people follow. The only thing is that some of the people who are hard of hearing have devices already, where they can take speech to text and read it off their device, as long as the speakers in the meeting aren't speaking too quickly. So, that's probably coming down the pipe. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry. Thank you all for coming tonight.